All right, I will call to order the Temecula City Council meeting for September 24th, 2024. Today, we will have our invocation by Jim Willis of the Center for Spiritual Living, Temecula Valley, and I will do the flag salute, so would you please rise?
Let's all come together. Let's take a deep breath. If you're comfortable, I ask you, close your eyes. Let's go into the center to center of our heart space, for that is absolutely where the presence of God resides in each and every one of us. And I know that there is that one power, one presence, one creator, one divine intelligence, one all and everything, which I choose to call God. For it is that power which has created all that there is. It's that same power which knows how to maintain and sustain all and everything. There is that one presence which is surely the life and the light and the love of God flowing in around and through each and every one of us. There's one creator and one creation, and there is that one divine intelligence that always, always knows what to do, when to do, and how to do it. And I know that the one is endowed with all the divine qualities of God of freedom and justice and life and light and love and peace and joy and happiness and harmony, balance and beauty, divine wisdom, wholeness, perfect health, and abundance and all and everything. So what I know is that tonight's meeting of the Temecula Valley City Council flows with grace and ease, that everything that needs to be discussed and said is done so with love, and everything that needs to be shared is shared with love. And I call it all good because it is all God, and God is goodness itself, so I simply allow it to be as together we say, amen.
All right, would you please join me in saluting the flag of this great country? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Calphus.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
And Mayor Stewart.
Here. All right, so first off, we have a couple presentations. One is a presentation of proclamation for National Service Dog Month. So can I have...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you are walking down to the podium and the representatives of Canine Companion are coming to the podium, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas National Service Dog Month is a time devoted to raising awareness and showing appreciation for the extraordinary work service dogs do every day for the people in their care, and whereas service dogs are specially trained to perform special tasks for people with disabilities as defined by the Americans with Disability Act, and whereas the eight types of service dogs are autism service dogs, herring dogs, diabetic alert dogs, seizure response dogs, guide dogs, allergy detection dogs, mobility assistance dogs, and PTSD service dogs, and whereas research shows that living with a canine companion can also provide physical benefits varying from improved cardiovascular health and increased physical activity to lower cholesterol and decreased blood pressure, and whereas we celebrate today's service dogs and the comfort, assistance, and unconditional love they offer, now therefore you, Mayor James Stewart, on behalf of the City of Temecula hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 to be National Service Dog Month. Congratulations. Hi, Rosie.
So would one or both of you like to speak? Okay, all right, go for it.
Canine Companions provides task-trained service dogs to adults, children, and veterans with disabilities, and facility dogs to professionals who are working in healthcare, criminal justice, rehabilitation, and educational settings. Their dogs and all follow-up services are provided at no cost to our clients. Canine Companions puppies are specially bred, raised, and trained for their future careers. Just a few facts for you, 64 million American adults and children have a disability. There are 16,000 service dogs from accredited programs in the U.S. Canine Companions created the concept of service dogs for people with physical disabilities, training the first service dog in 1975. The organization currently serves people with more than 65 different types of disabilities. Canine Companions has seven locations, serving the entire country. We have more than 2,800 active teams throughout the country, and we've recently placed our 8,000th service dog team. There are 500 people on our waiting list right now looking to be matched with expertly-trained service dogs. It's important that our community understands the benefits of a task-trained service dog, and a proclamation like this raises awareness for the rights of service dog users, including Canine Companions' clients. Just a little bit about our family, my dog, Oaken, underneath the podium here, works for my daughter, who's in the back. She may have actually stepped outside. These types of things are really difficult for her. I have two kids with autism, and having a service dog that can come along with us has led to greater access to our community, and we really appreciate the partnership with the City of Temecula in all that you guys have done to allow us to bring our dog, to raise awareness as well with public access trainings, and just understanding the benefits of the service dogs that come and work in our community. So thank you very much.
So just a quick question, so how long does it take to train a service dog?
So our dogs are in training for about two years. They are specially bred for this, so they start training from the moment they are born. They're with a volunteer puppy raiser like Rosie for about 18 months, and then they're in professional training for about six to nine months. In our region here locally, that's down in Oceanside, right down by the Mission. They graduate when they're about two years old.
Okay, and so how much does it generally cost to get a, from a puppy to an actual service dog?
Typically, we'll say it costs between $40,000 and $50,000, which is one of the great things about Canine Companions, is that that dog is provided to the individual that needs it free of charge. Many other service dog organizations do ask for clients to fundraise or provide some of the funds for the dog, and it becomes a big barrier.
Sure.
So...
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Here is your proclamation.
Perfect.
So hold it so she can get a...
Let's see.
You want to come over?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Good boy. Yay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have another presentation by the Economic Development Team and IT regarding the new city website and logo. Can I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to be here today to show you and the residents the refreshed City of Temecula First, we made a few minor changes to the city logo. That's the new logo right there. I would bet that most of you can't tell the difference, and that's a good thing. These changes were made to make the logo look cleaner for social media and when printed or embroidered on the fabric. Before I show you the website, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we did and what this project is, is really an updated look and feel of the website. We get a new homepage, improved accessibility, new visuals, and an improved mobile experience. What it's not is a change to our domain or any links, so all your hyperlinks, your favorites that you might have will still continue to work. We didn't change the content on the pages, just how they look, and we also didn't change the report of concern section, and with a few minor exceptions, we didn't change the mobile app. So why is accessibility one of those things I mentioned? The goal is to provide information in a way that's consumable by all Temecula residents. There's also accessibility mandates that the city must meet. Our website is scanned once a week to ensure it conforms with these mandates, and this project will address a few concerns that we have in terms of color contrast and the ability to use screen readers on our site. As a reminder, this is what our homepage currently looks like. Notice the logo in the top left, the main navigation and the search bar on the top, and then we have what they call the hero image and the five circle graphic buttons above the spotlight articles. And here's the new site. Notice the logo, the main navigation, and search bar are all contained in one row at the top. The graphic buttons are now rectangular, which allows us to add a six-button, and they contain text that can be read by a screen reader, improving our accessibility. The graphic buttons have a cool hover-over effect which highlights the button before As well as, as we scroll down the page, you can see, you'll see, we have the spotlights section that'll showcase council priorities and events based on past search results, and we have a similar section for press releases. Continuing on, we'll have a calendar widget which will display some upcoming classes, activities, and events in addition to city meetings, such as the council meeting that we're at today. Another change we're making is to add the city council homepage, city council to the homepage. Previously, they could be seen under the government menu, but now they'll be listed all on the homepage. Another key motivator for this project was to improve the user experience on a mobile phone. Our analytics show that most people viewing our site use some sort of mobile device. While this was no surprise, we wanted to ensure that the new site would be built with mobile devices in mind. Here's what it'll look like on your mobile device. The large rectangular buttons are all in one line, which minimizes scrolling and makes them easy to see and click on a phone. The social media icons remain the same, and the spotlights allow you to click right and left to view any additional stories that may be present. The calendar will also remain the same, as you see on the screen, and as you scroll down, the council information is there as well, and again, it's large, easy-to-click buttons that take you further to the council pages. Several pages have a slightly different branding based on their interaction with the community. We call these mini sites, and they include community services, public safety, the public library, and the theater. First up is community services. You'll notice that TCSD's page looks similar to the main city page, but it has its own color scheme, navigation, images, graphic buttons like class registration, rentals, and other events. Please note, you can always get back to the main city page using the button on the far right. Scrolling down, you see a nice new feature we call image buttons, where they have different divisions and learn more information about each of those divisions. As we scroll down, you see that they have similar social media icons for Facebook, Twitter, and the like, and then they have similar spotlights and press releases that are all clickable as were the, on the main city page. Here, they have a calendar feature that is specific to TCSD and shows their events and, as well as you can get to the city calendar from there as well. Next is public safety. The public safety site encompasses police, fire, and emergency management. They have similar graphic buttons where you can sign up for emergency alerts or to get further information on any of our emergency services. They also have image buttons, spotlights, and press releases specific to their functions. Library, again, you're probably seeing this theme here, it looks similar with a different color scheme and different buttons, all specific to the library's function. Lastly, we have the Old Town Temecula Theater. It again has a similar look and feel, custom colors, and navigation, and graphic buttons. One interesting, one interesting feature on this page is the use of the image buttons to showcase the events for the 24-25 season down here just below, just below the calendar as we scroll down. So those image buttons display all the information for the 24-25 season. So that's all of the site that we wanted to show you here today. I did want to take a minute to thank the team that helped put this together. It was a combination of IT, city manager's office, community services, the library, emergency management, and the theater. And the page is expected to go live starting tomorrow, so there's not a given time that we can, we can mention because it actually takes hours. When, when you, when you flip the switch, it actually takes hours to propagate through the internet, so, you know, sometime by tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, you should see the new site from any of your browsers. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, it looks incredible, so any questions from council? No? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're off to board and commission reports, and we have planning commission, Mr. Hagel.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I have two meetings I'm reporting on, a meeting of August 21st and September 4th. The meeting of August 21st was regarding the Altair villages up the street, and we looked at three different villages of the seven, the total of seven. The three were approved, and housing will probably not start being built till 2026, so it's still, still a ways off. The Village A consists of 146 detached single-family and duplex homes and one park. Village B consists of 109 detached single-family and duplex homes and one park. And Village C consists of 45 buildings containing 212 attached row homes. Two residents spoke. Their concern was about dust control, and I've noticed since then that the trucks that are spraying the water are out there like every couple hours, so it's, it's really improved quite, quite a bit. Commission approved it four to zero. I was, had to recuse myself, or I did recuse myself, due to a potential conflict that I own some preferred stock in a sister company, but I just decided not to have a conflict, And then September 4th, the commission received a presentation from staff on community land trust, regional housing trusts, and housing trust funds. The information did not require any action on us, but was an educational update. As a side note, I am attending the American Planning Association Conference Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and the conference is focusing on property trust, housing, parking, and the myriad of legislation coming down. And that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you. Any questions for, no? All right, so we'll go on to public safety report, and Chief Durham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the city staff, and city residents. I'm proud to present you your calls for service for the month of August. It's a little weird to talk about August when we're knocking on October's door, but nonetheless, you had 6,160 calls for service in the month of August. That's about 200 calls for service a day, which is a slight decrease over last year at this time, but total calls for service for the year are 46,000, and again, a slight decrease. Next slide, please. I wanted to share with you, I had the opportunity, these, these Temecula youth, these young men and young women gave up a majority of their summer to attend RSO's Explorer Academy. So it's six Saturdays in a row, 10 hours long. None of them missed any time, and where they were able to get training on ethics, community policing, defensive tactics, and firearms. You notice the smiles on their face, they're at a lot of your events. If you're having a bad day, get around one of them. Their enthusiasm to serve is absolutely contagious, and they are a great addition to, to the deputies and to the city. Next slide, please. Speaking of, of our volunteers, if you notice in the back, they'll come up, I have a good portion of your volunteer posse here. Your volunteer posse, they are volunteers with the sheriff's department, so they've gone through extensive training, background checks, but this specifically is your posse that you see on horseback. As a horse owner, I can tell you that one horses are expensive, and these horses, their time, they, they provide the feed, the vet bills, the, the transportation to city events, and as you can see on the slide, what, what goes better than horses and this Old Town theme? But this is your volunteer posse that I'm extremely grateful to work with. Year-to-date, right now, 2,800 hours as of yesterday of dedicated service to, to the City of Temecula and to the Old Town. You've seen them at all of your events, but this is many of the riders that you are, you are seeing.
Thank you for your time today. I wanted to give a brief history of what our accomplishments are, what we strive to do for the posse and for the community. Since our inception in 1992, we have been committed to tradition, the community, and safety, serving as the bridge between law enforcement and the public. Rooted in the heart of Temecula history, the culture, our nonprofit organization is dedicated in enhancing the bond between residents of the City of Temecula, the Temecula Valley, and the Riverside Sheriff's Office, comprised of all volunteers leveraging our time, resources, personal horses to fulfill diverse range of community services. Our involvement extends beyond public relations as we contribute to search and rescue, crowd control, parades, patrolling Old Town, and being the eyes and ears for the sheriff department. Now that that boring stuff's out of the way, okay. So the main reason we're here today is we want to grow. We, it's hard for us to look for people to volunteer. They either don't know how to volunteer or don't think they qualify to volunteer, so all you have to do is be 18. If you want to be mounted, you have to be able to ride a horse, qualifying the horse, have a horse that's qualified. If you do not, you can be ground support. One cannot exist without the other. For anybody that's come up and seen our horses, without the ground crew, the horses would get overwhelmed, so it's, we need each other. I wanted to give out some information today so we can try to get anybody who wants to get more information or want to volunteer. You go online to the riversidessheriffdepartment.org, look for volunteer forces unit, there's a button on there to say that you're interested. They will send you a form. Once you get far enough along, you ask them you want to be on the mounted posse for the Southwest Sheriff's Station, which controls all of Temecula Valley. Currently, right now, in the sheriff department, there are six stations that have posses. We are one of them. Again, we are the oldest, we are the original. The next closest one is years smaller than, or years younger than us. As the captain said, we've already done 2,800 hours just on our small posse alone servicing Temecula Valley and Old Town. Currently on our posse, we have three members that are prior law enforcement, me being one of them. We have two members that are currently full-time CSOs with the sheriff department, and on their days off, they volunteer back into the community with us, so it's almost like they're doing it seven days a week. A lot of people don't think that it's, again, something they can do. It's very easy to do. We are like a family. We hang out on duty, we hang out off duty, we quarrel, we, we get along, you know, it's just like one big family. So again, I thank you for the time. We just wanted to get it out there that we are always accepting new volunteers. If you see us out there, come up and talk to us, come up and pet the horses. We can give you more pamphlets, more information about it. And I'm gonna close out real quick. So out of the six stations that we have, again, we are all nonprofit, so everything we do is we either have to get it through donations or out of our own pocket. We, as a group of posses, we went and made challenge coins to represent the six stations, and today, I would like to give you all a challenge coin, from us to you, to let you know that we appreciate all the support that you've given us, the support you continue to give to us. We know that you guys come up and talk to us and support us, and we really appreciate that, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you. I will say, the market nights wouldn't be the same without you guys, because it makes all the kids nights when they can go up and pet the horse and talk to you guys, so thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right, so we are going to go on to council comments, council reports, so does anybody have something to report on? Mr. Schwenk?
Sure, I have a slide, but I'm gonna run on TCSD. I am gonna speak a little bit about affordable housing again this evening, and these are really just the comments that I made at our joint ready commission meeting and the city council meeting, which was a couple weeks ago. So when we talk about affordable housing, I think the thing that sticks out to me most is like, is did Temecula single-handedly create the housing crisis that we're experiencing? And the answer is that's obviously no. We can also all agree that housing is extremely expensive, more so than it's ever been, so those two things can be true at the same time. Should the city alone try to solve the national housing crisis? I don't think so. When I made my remarks at that meeting, I went back and said, well, how did we get here? And if you go back to the Great Recession, '07, '08, where collectively we were building homes, maybe we were building too many homes at that point, but we were building a ton of homes, that essentially stopped in the Great Recession, and we've never caught back up to that. And those year-over-year totals where we're not building homes adds up to a significant deficit of homes, so clearly, we have a massive deficit of home shortage right now in the market. One of the other things that happened coming out of the Great Recession is small builders, boutique builders went away. Like, there's a huge consolidation in the home-building market. It's large corporations that are building homes, and you could argue that that's great, they're able to scale, and maybe they did it a little bit cheaper, but the fact that there's just such a consolidation is problematic for builders. So that's a problem. Fast forward a few years, you get into COVID, right? And the whole world turned on its end, and we're really only talking about, you know, 15 years, right? Like, it's crazy, like, we're talking about 15 or so years that we've been dealing with this. Then you get, like I said, you get COVID, and this whole work-from-wherever-you-want model that we're in has now translated to skyrocketing home prices across the country, where smaller cities had never experienced issues with affordable housing, or just housing prices in general. So that's a problem. There are so many factors that go into this, it's just nauseating almost when you think about it. And we continue to have meetings, subcommittee meetings is how we do things here at the city, where we have subcommittee meetings, and we had one today. We're, we're working on an RFP for another potentially 100 units in Uptown Jefferson. If you look around the city, the amount of, of single-family homes that are being built, and we just had a presentation from a planning commission on one, apartment buildings that are coming in, I don't think you can objectively look at the city and say, Temecula's the problem. I don't think you could actually make that case. And I think, we say it all the time, certainly, there's always more that we can do. We can be creative, we can try to work regionally, which I think is the best approach, because we do need to regionally think about what housing looks like, not just this year, not just next year, not just for one individual or two individuals, but for collectively as a, as a community, as a region, we need to figure out what that's gonna look like. So I think, you know, we'll continue to have this conversation, but I really wanted to sort of lay out here in this forum that there are so many factors... that there are so many factors that go into, uh, housing costs and prices. And if you really sort of peel the layers back and you go back fifteen or so years, you can kind of put this, uh, this little story or this puzzle together, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Coffins?
I do have one slide here. Uh, today, Councilwoman Alexander, myself, and Assistant to the City Manager, Ms. Betsy, were able to attend the Rancho Water groundbreaking ceremony, which is right here in the wine country, around the Deep Porto La Wine Trail. And up here at the city, we, uh, we talk a lot about local control. And this is a, a facility that's gonna have, um, about ten wells where they're gonna drill for their own water. And they're gonna have, um, a huge basin for our own water storage. And I know droughts are always a big topic in California. And, and this facility, uh, is a great, uh, example of how Rancho Water is helping us with local control and keeping, uh, when there's a bunch of rain, now we're gonna be able to have a bigger basin to store it. We're gonna be drilling for our own water, which, uh, with the hope with that is that it brings down, uh, the cost to the end consumer, which is the residents and the business owners of Temecula. Uh, so it was a great groundbreaking ceremony today that we were fortunate to attend and we're fortunate to be partners, uh, with Rancho Water. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Nothing from you. All right, so I've got a slide. So I also, uh, took a little bit of, of a tour a couple of weeks ago. Um, I got challenged to go look at the warehouse at Creekside. And I was, I gotta tell you, I was incredibly impressed. This place has, you know, secured private parking. It's a secure building, too. You can't just walk into, uh, uh, the warehouse. You, you have to have, uh, a key fob to get in. So I got a tour by the, uh, property manager. I got to see in two of the units and very nice units. I was very impressed. It kind of had a New York City kind of feel. As you can see, it, it has like alleyways and, um, everybody kind of dolled up the outside the way they felt, uh, fit to, to doll it up. So it, it, I was very impressed with the, uh, place. Um, and as far as the regulatory agreements, that's, um, that's something I wanted to kind of touch on. And you can see the laundry facilities and just very nice. Um, the regulatory agreements that, um, uh, have been discussed, I've, I've communicated with, uh, the tenant on, on her, uh, regulatory agreement. But I did want to point out that we have six affordable complexes with fifty-one to eighty percent, uh, AMI. So, so there's six other complexes that you can live in and go all the way up to eighty percent of the average median income. Whereas this, this Creekside, and I think there's two other or three others in Old Town, are set at the sixty percent. And that's kind of important just because it allows those, uh, residents who work in Old Town to have a place to live. Because, you know, a, a, a lot of people who work in Old Town don't make big dollars. So these, these units were specifically designed by past city councils. So w- we, we've inherited these regulatory agreements. But, but to me, it makes sense because it really does allow for, um, those people who are working in Old Town to be able to live in Old Town, to keep people off the freeway. And so, so that, that I found very interesting. And the fact that we have six other affordable complexes that have the fifty-one to eighty percent, uh, AMI, it protects that missing middle that, uh, people who, who, um, income out of the sixty percent can move to another one if they're, if they're aware of their, uh, income outing to, to get into one of these other projects. So, um, there, there, there is, uh, I think the city's done a really good job of creating affordable housing. Could we do more? Absolutely, and we would love to do more. It's all about money, though. We, we really, we, we have to have it to build it. So, um, fortunately, we do have one project in the works right now, another hundred units. So, um, super excited about that. And we'll be looking at that regulatory agreement going forward to see what we can do, um, differently than the past ones. So, um, moving forward, I think we're, we're doing everything we possibly can. So, um, with that being said, I will go on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have several public comments. As a reminder, we do have a thirty-minute cutoff for public comments. Um, each speaker is limited to three minutes, so we'll go for the, the full thirty minutes. Um, and speakers are called in the order that they are received. Uh, the additional rules are reflected in the printed agenda itself. The first speaker is Eric Faulkner, to be followed by Austin Scola.
Test, test, test. City Council, how you doing this afternoon and staff as well? I'm here quickly to address, uh, Councilmember Jessica Alexander. Uh, so, um, you know, I normally work on a three-strike rule, uh, when, you know, when I'm, when I'm dealing with things. And, and when things are addressed to me in a way that I think they're inappropriate, I need to bring it up. So Jessica, uh, Councilmember Alexander, I'll be respectful this entire time. And, uh, but she texted me initially saying that, can we meet? I said, no, it's, I think it's inappropriate. But if it's ready committed, uh, related, you can address it with Director, uh, Director Joel. Or if it's, uh, anything else related, hey, running through the city. I really don't think we should be meeting with one another. I think it's not the appropriate time, we're running against each other. Send me a scripture, uh, and then I said, okay, I'm a man of faith of God as well, thank you for the scripture. And I said, uh, you know, and she, and she said that scripture said if you, if someone had sin against you, I have no sin against you. Uh, so that, that, that scripture doesn't point to me. Uh, so, but, and then after that, if, uh, okay, she, uh, Councilmember Alexander said, my mind is clear, uh, anything happens from this point is on you. So anybody else would take that as a threat? I mean, I didn't take it as a threat, I think that was just, uh, her words, uh, or whatever. So that was a first strike. And then it was a sign issue. I know there's complexities about where to put signs, not, where not to put signs. But those issues should be, council members should not be calling residents or anyone to talk about that. They should be running that through the city manager. City manager runs code enforcement. If anything, I hear from code enforcement, not three times from a city council member. Nobody does that. So there was strike two, I'm like, okay, let's get this under control. And then the last strike was this, this painted me, uh, somebody sent me this. I don't look on sites or anything like that, but somebody sent me something where a letter went out to pastors and it painted me as this dark cloud, uh, that's gonna bring all these ideologies into the city. Uh, so it's just inappropriate. I think that's beneath, uh, the position of a council member, someone who served in our military, and also a member of law, who's been a member of law enforcement. I wanna bring these to you, and I'll be quick and out of the way, but I think I'm gonna continue to press forward and respect and love. And I think those three things are, are reason I'm here tonight. I had, I, I, I didn't talk about that, too, I was pressing for it. But that third thing was very personal, uh, to me. And I feel like I need to address it tonight. So thank you for your time, and that's all I have. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Austin Scola, to be followed by Shelby Bunch.
Hello. Um, I was here a few weeks ago regarding, um, the, uh, charge, I guess, in, uh, garbage taxes collection. And, um, what kind of came into play and what plays into that is, uh, the garbage trucks coming, uh, down our road on Cantrell Road. Um, I talked to, uh, one representative that called me about it. And he said, well, you gotta bring it up in public works. But I guess that meeting was postponed or canceled until next month. So I said, I could start off talking about it here. Um, originally, when we moved to the property, uh, last year, it was just us, the, uh, Blueberry Farm, and then residential housing going up. And then there was a nursery on the corner. Since that time, there's been a synagogue slash daycare that's been approved by the city to go in there. And there's been another full-scale, uh, daycare on the corner going in there, um, for new construction. So since that time, besides the garbage trucks doing, uh, damage to the road and the, um, you know, what we were responsible for, now you have a lot of heavy-duty graders, uh, bulldozers, dump trucks, everything using that road. And it's totally destroyed the pavement and alligatored out all the block pavement on there. So the, since we've moved there, uh, I have probably about eight thousand dollars in to just fix-it little things on the road and stuff from the garbage trucks going down the road. But since that time, it's gotten extremely worse. And the guy that owns Blueberry Farm, my neighbor, is worried about, uh, you know, the pavement and stuff with the rain and everything, just totally washing out the road. So now we have, uh, bids from two different paving companies to do the whole road. And that's, uh, approximately thirty thousand dollars. So I guess, uh, my, um, qualm is we're covering all these costs to maintain that road, but then we have no decision-making power on all the businesses that are getting okayed to go in there. And all these heavy-duty trucks that are using it have just, you know, pissed away anything that we've tried to fix, uh, to maintain the road. So, um, I was told that there is some kind of program where Temecula can adopt a road. And so that's kind of my request is to kind of get on this path of what do I need to do? Uh, or what checkboxes do I need to hit for you guys to adopt it? My neighbor was under the impression that it has to be up to city code as far as sidewalks and fire hydrants and all these things. And with how steep the pitch of the road is, I can't see anybody, you know, using it, you know, for those types of things. But, uh, in talking to somebody from the city here, when you guys have adopted it, uh, some of those things were able to be, um, looked past or, you know, different provisions were given to, I guess, adopt the road. So that, I don't know where else to go or to, you know, how to get it more on the pathway. But they said this is like the first spot to, like, I guess, introduce it. So that's all I have to say. I don't know, you know, what kind of response I'm looking for, where to take it from there.
I would like to actually see if we can somehow bring this to the, the Roads Committee and kind of look at this a little bit and just see what kind of impact our city is putting on that particular road, just to kind of see if there's any mitigation that needs to take place.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We'll go ahead and provide that information.
Okay. Can somebody get back in contact?
Yes, we'll follow up with you directly. We got your, uh, information, we'll follow up with you directly.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The next speaker is Shelby Bunch, to be followed by Greg Langworthy. You can, you can remain seated until the next speaker is called up.
We were all speaking together in one session, that's why we were gonna come up altogether. Um, good evening, my name is Shelby Bunch. My colleagues and I live in Riverside County. And we are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans USA is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over twenty states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens, sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the twenty-twenty-two election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for overturning or rerunning any past election. Tonight, we will represent, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We are asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Langworthy, to be followed by Carol Butcher.
So I'm gonna continue the resolution. So whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, I think we're gonna argue with that. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. And we've used these tenets to examine our own election in Riverside County. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. That's the National Voter Registration Act passed in nineteen ninety-three. The votes counted must be from eligible citizens. That's according to the Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment. And there's a big debate about that now before this election. The number of votes counted must equal the number of votes who counted. And we've been examining that at Riverside County. There can be no more than one in a hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system. So the voting system must be highly accurate. So whereas the analysis of the California twenty-twenty-two general election has uncovered evidence of mass inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including, and this is just for the, the state of California, we've actually done this analysis in Riverside, and if I have time, I'll give you that data. So five million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight ineligible or uncertain registration violations were found within the California state roll database. Two million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine votes were cast by these ineligible or certain registrations. One thou, or one, yeah, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five more votes counted than voters who voted. More votes were counted than the number of people who actually voted. Hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five of those. And then two million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid election. For California, the legal limit was only ninety. But there are over two million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine apparent vote, voting violations. That all goes to point out that our voter rolls are very inaccurate. In Riverside County, our own ROB admits there are over two hundred thousand ineligible voters still on our voter roll who were sent ballots just recently. They've admitted that to us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Butcher, to be followed by Tim Smith.
My name is Carol Butcher, and I'm here to read into the record this next section of the USA Resolution. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the twenty-twenty-two election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the twenty-twenty-two general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly improvable chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid twenty-twenty-four general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged thirty days before the start of early voting. Voters added after the date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secured ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud, for pro, for fraud, excuse me, fraud prevention regarding risk assessment. regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Smith, to be followed by Jim Niedrecker.
My name is Tim Smith, and I'm here to read into the record the last section of the USA resolution. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six, ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than ten percent of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people as accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Temecula City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. This concludes the resolution. We implore the Riverside Board of Supervisors, the California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people.
The next speaker is Jim Niedrecker, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
My name is Jim Niedrecker, and I'm here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our twenty-twenty-two election from registration all the way through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the twenty-twenty-four general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential to securing our liberty. The cost of not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for your next city council meeting, um, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely important, important election videos. We encourage you to visit uniteforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unite, the number four, uh, for freedom dot com. You have my contact information. If you have any questions about the resolution, I would be happy to answer those. If I can't, then the USA organization will answer those for you, and we're hoping you'll put this on the next agenda so you can discuss it and vote to support it. Thanks very much for your time.
The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Lori Trask.
Where do I begin? My name's Laurel Lamont, and Jessica, you accused me of sexually proposing, propositioning the council for a house. Like I was going to have sex with the council for a house. I was going to offer myself for the record. I will not sleep with anybody on the city council. I don't want a free house. I'm asking for you to allow the owner of Warehouse at Creekside to extend my lease because there's nowhere for me to go. I made fifty-two thousand dollars last year. You have everything I make. You have my bank statements. You have my pay stubs. You have my W-two's. I work here. I'm not on EBT. I don't get child support. I'm asking to be able to stay housed in a one-bedroom apartment. Furthermore, what you don't understand about your tour through Warehouse at Creekside, what you didn't talk about is how because I was there, we got brand-new windows, replaced twice, because the first time they replaced them, they replaced them with an off-street contractor that filled them with two-by-fours, and then the building leaked. I also didn't have the opportunity to show you where else in the apartment it leaks every time it rains. How the repairs don't happen unless I CC the city on every, every request. How our mail is dropped off on the street. Did you talk to any of the tenants? Because nobody there works in Old Town. They probably don't qualify. And when you cap out at the sixty percent AMI, existing tenants in a two-bedroom unit are spending seventeen fifty on their two-bedroom unit, but if I want to get into a two-bedroom unit, I get to start at the highest point, twenty-three hundred. They're going to up it to the highest threshold when I'm at the bottom. Affordable housing isn't working, and it's broken, and it is designed to benefit the developer and the landlord, not the tenants. Where does the workforce go? Put a pause. Allow the owner of the building to allow the tenants to stay until we have a place to go. We are paying our rent.
The next speaker is Lori Trask, to be followed by Archie Hutchinson.
I would just like to, uh, read scripture and pray a blessing over you guys. I appreciate, um, you guys being out here each week, and I know that it's kind of a little crazy tonight in some areas, and so I just wanted to pray, um, peace and blessing over this place. And I also wanted to read Psalm one. It's one of my favorites. Um, I learned it when I was a child, and it's just still something that comes back to me, uh, but it's for all humans, uh, men and women that God's created, and he just says, "Blessed is the man who walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stands in the path of sinners, nor sits in the seat of the scornful, but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law he meditates day and night. He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water that brings forth its fruit and its season, whose leaf also shall not wither, and whatever he does shall prosper. The ungodly are not so, but are like the chaff which the wind drives away. Therefore, the ungodly shall not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous; for the Lord knows the way of the righteous, but the way of the ungodly shall perish." And Father God, I want to come before you in the name of Jesus Christ, and I want to ask for your Spirit to rest over this place right now, um, because of the blood of Christ that was shed on a cross for us, Father. I want to ask, Lord, that you would cause the men and the women on this city council and the men and the women in this city, Lord, to fear you. I ask that for those that are in this chamber, that the fear of the Lord, which is the beginning of wisdom and knowledge of the Holy One, which is understanding, would be permeating, Lord, in hearts and minds. God, that we would, uh, submit ourselves to you, God, that we would come under the authority of God, our Creator, through your Son, Jesus Christ, and that we would, uh, just humble ourselves before you, that we would fall upon the rock that, uh, of Jesus Christ in our brokenness over our own sin, instead of having to come under the judgment when the rock falls upon those that refuse to bow now. And so, Father, I just ask for blessing. May you bless and keep each of the members in this city and on the city council, Lord. Would you cause your face to shine upon them in the name of Jesus? Lord, would you be gracious to them? Lord, I pray that for the city, for the citizens, for those sitting behind me. Would you cause your face to shine upon them? Would you, um, lift up your counts, uh, countenance upon them and give them each piece? In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
The next speaker is Archie A, I think it's.
Acheson.
Acheson, okay, to be followed by Jen Reeves.
I'm Arch Acheson, uh, resident almost nineteen years of Temecula, um, remembering tonight, a few years ago, when the city council gave us a, a little motto about Temecula, the city of love. Um, and we just cherish that. That was wonderful. However, I've become aware in recent years of the affordable housing issue, realizing that the economy of this city is on the back of those people who are working in the service industries, the wineries, Old Town, which on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights is teeming with people from all over who come here to be a part of that community. These are important people who deserve everything we can do to help them, not make them live far away so they can come to their jobs here in Temecula. You heard a plea tonight from a young woman who has raised her son by herself. I met her years ago and was so impressed because she told me she took economic books and studied them to figure out how to do a budget to be able to exist with her son and live in this community and work in this community. That takes a lot of energy. That takes a lot of wit. That takes a lot of faith, and this woman deserves help. But she's not the only one. There's five other residents of that facility. Three of them are already gone. Some of them, we don't know where they are. And others, just like her, are waiting. The ax is coming down in a few days. Affordable housing is very, very critical to our community. As a senior citizen now in my life, or as I say, chronologically gifted, I'm realizing that in a couple of years, I may want other housing, and I don't want to leave Temecula. But you know what? Where does someone on a fixed income in retirement years find a home in Temecula that you can afford for those last years of your life? It's time to take action. She has asked that this city council, this city government, work with the management of that building to give them extensions until they either can find other housing or to reassess that contract, which is using figures back years ago. The economy has changed. I looked up today, California's mean income is seventy-three thousand dollars. You heard what her salary is. It's almost nothing in comparison to that. Low income is right there. You can't live here on that kind of a salary without help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jen Reeves, to be followed by Rachel Dennis.
I look up there at each of you, and I wonder, do any of you have any true idea what housing insecurity feels like? Not as something you have seen from the outside looking in, but as something that you have actually experienced in your own life. My guess is you haven't, because if you had, you wouldn't be ignoring the actual needs of your constituents the way you are. These aren't wants. Having a roof over your head is a need. We live in a county, or we live in one of the county's highest costing areas, and yet the income allowance for housing assistance is lower than the surrounding areas. You seem to think that our workforce should live somewhere less expensive and then just commute here, but it seems to me that if they move to a less expensive area, then they can just work there instead. The only thing you are doing with your inaction is creating a larger issue when it comes to the unhoused and chasing our workforce right out of this community. Do you plan to start working these jobs when you've chased the current workforce away? Jessica, you sat here two weeks ago and slandered a constituent from the throne you seem to have placed yourself upon. Your job is not to sit in a nonpartisan office and push your agenda. It is to do right by those in your constituency. You have yet to do that even once in the four years you have sat there. You have continually, continually shown your ineptitude at your job, and this November, it will be time for someone who truly cares about this community to be in that seat. You have absolutely become elitists. You compare the struggles of the upper-middle class to those struggling to get by, soccer fields to a roof over someone's head. These are not the same thing. Your ability, inability to see this is very telling. Literally, no one has asked you for a free house or to magically fix this. They have asked you to do something, to worry about something more than bike paths and classic cars and what someone you don't even know does with their own body, to worry about the actual needs of your constituents rather than what you think they need. I am asking you to do right by them now and put a stay on the evictions these residents are facing. Do something. Thank you.
The last speaker, um, is Rachel Dennis. That is the last speaker, concluding the thirty minutes.
My name's Rachel Dennis. I'm a friend of Laurel Lamont and a community advocate for the least of these. I'm also a Christian in Christianity. Laurel is considered one of the least of us because she is a single woman left alone with her son with no help from the father, a fatherless child. So here I am. Pastor Tony Campolo one Sunday morning said, "I have three things I'd like to say today. First, while you were sleeping last night, thirty thousand kids died of, died of starvation or disease related to malnutrition. Second, most of you don't give a shit. What's worse is you're more upset with the fact that I said shit than that thirty thousand kids died last night." In the same fashion, I'd like to say, the homeless rate in Riverside County rose fifteen percent in the last two years. There are over half a million children in California that are homeless, equating to one in every twenty children in our state. You have an affordable housing building where you have a revolving door of monthly evictions out of town or to the street because they make too much money, yet they don't make enough for market rent or home prices in this entire valley. What's worse is these are single mothers, their children, and former foster kids, and you don't give a shit. What's even worse is one of these single moms has been advocating before you for this very issues for eight years, and you've done nothing to help. You watch as she and her son are the next on the eviction list, knowing all this time it's within your power to stop it. As a fellow Christian, you know that, sorry, what is detestable is that you, Jessica Alexander, are more upset with cleavage than the fact you're keeping people in poverty or else sending them to the street or out of town. As a fellow Christian, you know that those who can't handle the female body are instructed to gouge their eyes out. It was said to men, but it certainly applies to some women as well. If our breasts offend you, ask yourself why and take Jesus' words to heart. Defamation of character of a public advocate in this valley with sexist and sexual lies is a detestable thing. It's also shameful that you others up here on the dais did not stop her from defamation by name from the dais. I can tell you what sexual harassment is, Jessica. It's your boss smacking you on the ass as you leave the physician meeting you just held. It's a drunk surgeon grabbing you and not letting you go.
Thank you. That concludes the time, and, Mr. Mayor, that concludes, um, all public speakers within thirty minutes.
All right. So we will go on to the consent calendar. Number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinance, ordinances, and resolutions included in this agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of September fifth and September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report for period. Number four, approve city treasurer's report for period of June first, 2024 through June thirtieth, 2024. Number five, accept notice of draft amendments for the 2024 Conflict of Interest Code. Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Michelle's Place Cancer Resource Center for the Walk of Hope at the request of subcommittee members Calphus and Stewart. Number seven, approve amendment to the agreement with Esgill LLC for plan review services. Number eight, approve amendment to agreement with Liebert, Cassidy, Whitmore for cumulative special attorney services. Number nine, initiate proceedings to renew the Visit Temecula Valley Tourism Business Improvement District under the Property and Business Improvement District Law for 1994. Number ten, approve parcel map thirty-eight, one sixty-six, located on the corner of the west side of Inez and the north side of Equity Drive. And that concludes that.
I'll move consent.
Second. All right. It's been moved to seconded. Please vote. All right. That passes four-zero. I will move it on to the Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll now call Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do. We have one public comment on a non-agendized item. The speaker is Hanan Rickert.
Welcome.
That was intense. Pray that the Lord give you guys strength and wisdom. Continue doing His will, which is proper judgment. Sitting there thinking, you know, a couple, I think the main issue I see that, just for you all, you know, for all of us, but especially you guys, the main problem I'm seeing is that there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people in this country that profess to know Christ, but like Isaiah and Jesus would say, you know, hearts are far from Him. And I want to, I want to put the blame at the doorstep of the church as a whole, first of all. Just, I want you to be aware of what we're fighting against, because we've seen what happened years ago when that type of spirit that professes Christianity starts burning, they start, they don't get their way, they start burning buildings down. We've seen that happen, and it's going to happen again when they don't get their way. Well, they got their way tonight, so they're not going to be burning things down tonight. At least, you know, they got, they got their little whim off their chest. But eventually, you know, this is ultimately the problem that you're facing, that we're facing as a whole, is not in your ability to solve. I think you already recognize that. You've been making that point pretty clear, that you're doing the best you can. I just keep going back to, just back to the prayer of Benjamin Franklin. As many of the colonies were getting ready to disperse, and the British were coming, he like gave one last final call, and it was a call prayer. He says, "As one sprawl can't fall to the ground without God noticing." I don't remember exactly how that went, but his point was, we have to rely on God. And they prayed, and then they had a preacher come in. He preached the message, and next thing you know, the colonies were working with the things they agree with, but not the things they disagree with. Hence, by the way, which is how slavery continued in this nation for another hundred years or so. Of course, thankfully, leading to the abolishment of slavery after much blood, sweat, and tears. Just keep the good fight. Remember, our help comes from the Lord. Keep doing what's right, Jessica. I commend you for that. That's biblical. There's another verse that says, "If your brother has aught against you," you're supposed to leave your sacrifice and go to your brother and make amends before you offer your sacrifice. God bless you all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, any more?
There are no further comments.
Thank you. We have one item on consent. Item eleven is approve action minutes of September tenth, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us go ahead and vote. Okay, and that passes four-zero. We'll move on to our Director of Community Services report this evening. Director Reese?
Yes, indeed, Mr. President. We have a brief staff presentation. I'd like to invite up the Human Services team, and then, following their presentation, I just have one quick slide, so come on up. So I'd like to invite up Community Services Manager Yvette Martinez, and she's going to introduce her team, and they're going to give you a quick recap of what they worked on this summer over at the MRC.
Thank you, Erica. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Yvette Martinez, Community Services Manager with the Human Services Division, and it's my pleasure to introduce you to our dedicated team of Human Services staff, Cecilia Solis and Cassandra Ambreeze. You might have seen them over at the Mary Phillips Senior Center or the Margarita Rec Center, but they'll be providing you with a six-month update on the Margarita Rec Center as well as recapping our summer programs. And so, as you know, Human Services strives to provide inclusive and accessible programs and services to people of all ages and abilities. And so, with that, I'd like to hand it over to Cecilia Solis, who will give you an update on the summer meal program. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cecilia Solis, Community Services Supervisor at the Mary Phillips Senior Center, and I have the privilege of operating the summer food service program as well. The summer food service program is federally funded, state-administered, summer meal program that ensures youth ages eighteen and under or eighteen and over with disabilities are provided with a free nutritious meal while school is out of session. Temecula currently has two eligible sites, the Rotary Park and the Mike Nogard Community Park. This summer, we expanded the number of days we serve meals to five days per week, and we met with an overwhelming positive response from the community. We serve a total of seven thousand meals between both parks. Additionally, provided one thousand eight hundred meals to our Camp Sore program at the Mary Mercy for a total of eight thousand eight hundred meals. This program, like our meal program, like our senior meal program offered at the Senior Center, are one of many human services programs that we are proud of offering our community. Here are some photos from our, from this summer program, and as you can see, we had many happy families. One grandmother, and I just want to, just want to share some feedback from the community. One grandmother shared how blessed they feel to receive this support during the summer months while school is out of session. The staff are so friendly and warm. A family who has participated for several years shared their deep appreciation for the city's support, such an essential program that helps family over the summer. Overall, these comments reflect the significant role the summer food, the summer food service program play in our community, and we want to thank all of you who have come out year after year to support us. Thank you. At this moment, I want to introduce Cassandra Ambreeze, Community Services Coordinator, who will be providing an update on the Margarita Recreation Center.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Stewart, City Council members. My name is Cassandra Ambreeze, and I'm the Community Services Coordinator within Human Services Division. Over the past six months, the Margarita Recreation Center has opened its doors to thousands of community members, offering a variety of classes, programs, and activities for people of all ages and abilities. Additionally, the MRC is also home to inclusive and adaptive programs for individuals with disabilities, allowing participants to connect with others, engage in the community, and grow their sense of belonging. Another special feature of the MRC is our little free library, which enhances book accessibility and encourages a love for reading. We look forward to expanding program offerings and further establishing the MRC as a welcome place for everyone. This summer, the Human Services team launched the Camp Sore program at the Margarita Recreation Center. This was the first-ever summer camp at the MRC, and it had four sessions full of summer outreach, activities, and recreation. Camp Sore embarked on a global adventure right from camp, savoring international cuisine, art, music, dance, and more from around the world. During the summer, we partnered with the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library to host literacy and reading activities and enrichment throughout our camp program. New to the Margarita Recreation Center is our Sore After School program, which offers a dynamic blend of educational enrichment, creative activities, active play, and more. The program will begin on October fifteenth and will take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the academic school year. Sore After School is for children ages five to eleven, and we're really excited to launch this program that we know will benefit many local families. Lastly, we'd like to invite you all to join us for the upcoming Health and Community Resource Fair, taking place this Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from nine AM to noon at the Civic Center and Town Square Park. The event will include free health screenings, health-related informational booths and resources, live entertainment, raffle giveaways, live Kids Zone, and more. There's something for the whole entire family, and we'd love to see you all there. That concludes our report, and we would be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions or comments for staff?
I just want to say to you ladies, I know all four of us, all of our staff, has seen what a marvelous job you have all done, so I just wanted to say thank you for continuously doing your work to reach out to the community and doing an excellent job at what all of you do is working together. So, thank you.
And I would just like to add on to that. It wasn't that long ago that we were sitting in an old building, sort of visioning what this facility could be, and to see the implementation, what you've taken as just sort of like a plan and implemented into the community with, I mean, the expansion of the summer food service program, where at one point, everyone was kind of wondering, does our community even need this? And seven thousand meals that are like highly appreciated by the families in our community because obviously school's out, to Camp Sore over the summer, to then your Sore After School program, we like, everything that the families from that, that community, those visioning workshops said, like, you've created it. Like, it's the library component of it, it's like, it's like, it's really, really exciting and just congratulations and thank you, really, for all the hard work that you put in that community, and just, I know the community appreciates you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming up and sharing that. I really appreciate it. And the staff, as you've all mentioned, is just truly exceptional people who are really dedicated. And in addition to these three wonderful people, they have a very committed staff as well who help make every one of those programs happen. Fun side note, we talk about this being an intergenerational center, and there's that beautiful wooden little free library in one of the pictures that looked like a little, almost like a dollhouse, and that was actually made by the woodcarvers at the Senior Center, if I recall correctly. So it was just a great example of how those two groups have come together here. So, thank you again. And then just one slide, please. So this Saturday is the annual TEDx over at the theater. This year's theme is Reimagined: Exploring Powerful Ideas That Heighten Our Lives and Community. That's Saturday, September twenty-eighth, over at the theater, and I apologize, I don't have the time on there, but it's available at the website, tedxtemecula.com. I feel like it starts at ten AM, but don't quote me on that. I have a terrible memory for these things. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. General Manager, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Board Directors, anything? I do just have one quick slide that I'd like to go ahead and throw up. So on September fourteenth, we did Cartoonapalooza. This is an event that started a few years ago, again, with this, like, this vision. And I will say, when we showed up to this event to check it out, I was, I was excited at the crowd, but then I was, I was, I think, more excited about who the crowd was. And oftentimes, we have events, and we're wondering, like, how do we engage our youth, our twenty-somethings, like artistic, creative people, and how do we give them an outlet? I think we found the event. There was a cosplay event that was fantastic, very, obviously, very well attended. I think overall attendance was around three thousand total people. We bought some art. We saw people that we'd met in the past at different events. I just want to say to staff and, and to Tony Mormarcos, who was kind of like, like his brainchild for this in a lot of ways, just kudos. Like, it's taken a few years to get this event to a place where this is gonna, this is gonna shine for many, many years to come. And like I said, it was, it was a great outlet for younger folks in our community to express artistic, the artistic side of themselves. And so, just a wonderful event. If you didn't make it, look for it next year. It was really cool. So, that's all. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to, back to Mayor Stewart.
All right. I reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We've got item number twelve, introduce ordinance amending titles five, eight, fifteen, and seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to implement Assembly Bill nine-seventy and making various minor changes and technical revisions. Could I get a staff report?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council Members. My name is Mark with the Planning Department. I'll be presenting long-range project number LR two-four dash zero 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 five. Little bit of background, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted in nineteen ninety. Since its adoption, the council has periodically made amendments to various sections of the code to improve its clarity, improve process, and implement state law. This proposed ordinance, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, would amend titles five, our business license and regulations, title eight, our health and safety, title fifteen, building into construction, as well as title seventeen, zoning. Little bit of the ordinance history, this went to the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Update, Municipal Code Update Subcommittee, forgive me. It was presented to Commissioners Ruiz and Hagel. It was presented to the City Council General Plan Update Subcommittee with Mayor Stewart and Council Member Alexander, and then this was taken to the Planning Commission on the seventh of August, with Resolution twenty-two-four dash fourteen being adopted, recommending adoption, and it's before you this evening. Okay, we'll jump right into the changes here. Changes to Title Five, we have three total. Our first one deals with massage, massage exemptions, and it would address section five point two-two point one-two-zero, and it would clarify that the following professionals cannot supervise massage personnel, marriage and family therapists, psychologists, and those with a certificate to practice the healing arts. Medical professionals, psychiatrists who hold a medical degree are, would not be applicable to this. They are allowed to supervise massage therapists. Okay, change two, this one is specific to tobacco shops, section five point two-four zero eight zero, other requirements and prohibitions. It would add a reference to an existing section that clarifies all paint containers, paint pens, and nitrous oxide containers shall be kept behind lock and key per section nine point zero eight point zero four zero. This is an existing standard. We did add the requirement for nitrous oxide containers to be included, as there have been some incidences being identified through our code enforcement and RSO partners. The final change to Title Three, sticking with tobacco shops, we're going to clarify that the delivery pickup, both in-person and online, sale of flavored tobacco products is prohibited. When we updated our ordinance last year, we added language saying that it is prohibited, but did not specifically clarify that online was included. So we're doing that here today. Additionally, would prohibit entry to minors. Minors here means persons less than eighteen years of age, and add language to remove any doubt that sales to any person under twenty-one is prohibited. Jumping to Title Eight, section eight point one-two point one-two-zero, our public nuisance definition, which is existing, we're going to expand that definition to include public nuisance and disorderly house, and would be subject to abatement along with all public nuisances within the city. Speaking of the final for Title Eight, for our operating standards, for our stationary vendors, this would clarify that customer vehicles may not block bike lanes, entrances, or signage of existing businesses, and would also specify dimensions for such things, which would be a ten-by-ten pop-up, and all signage, everything would be inclusive of that space. Our sole change for Title Five, or I'm sorry, Title Fifteen, would change chapter fifteen point twenty-four, our streamlined review. This would implement Assembly Bill nine-seventy, which sets approval timelines for commercial, electric, and hydrogen vehicle fueling stations. It tightens up our approval timelines based on the scope of the project. Jumping into Title Seventeen, this one's a little confusing here. Section seventeen oh-one zero-seven-zero, the relationship to existing Section seventeen oh one zero seven zero, the relationship to existing specific plan and Riverside County Land Use Ordinance. What this boils down to is some of our specific plans, the older ones, were adopted prior to the city's incorporation, and they relied on the county's land use ordinance, in this case, ordinance three forty-eight. What this change would do would clarify that the city's general plan and zoning designations would be used in its place when that is called for in those specific plans. Title Seventeen, change two of four, dealing with temporary use permits, chapter seventeen point oh four zero two zero. This would specify that vendor, vendor and/or farmer's markets would be considered a major TUP if they propose the using of parking facilities, drive aisles, parking stalls, things like that. If they do not propose that, they would be a minor. And our third change for Title Seventeen would be the table seventeen oh eight zero three zero, our scheduled permitted uses. A few little tweaks in here, we're going to amend the table to add note nine, a reference to annual keeping standards. We're going to include, or include training in the sports and recreation facility land use, and then we're going to add a note referencing chapter five point two two, which is the massage chapter. All right, and then our final change here for the evening would be a chapter seventeen point four zero, our telecommunications facilities, and this would remove water tanks as an approved location for wireless telecommunications facilities. This is to prevent, what you see up there on your screen, once a wireless telecommunications facility is approved, it has federal requirements to co-locate, meaning one tower can suddenly turn into several, which, what we're trying to prevent here within the city. And then our SEQA determination, staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Equality Act, SEQA pursuant to section one five zero six one B three, and staff's recommendation is that the City Council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. This completes my staff report, and I'm prepared for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I just have a couple ones, just like a random, like, water tower question. How many water towers do we, is there one water tower in Temecula?
Oh, we, I believe we have three total.
Three total, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then on the, on the farmer's market, that sort of, was it the use of the drive aisles or the road for, like, the farmer's market itself? Not for parking, but for like actual selling goods?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have vendor stands set up in your parking facilities of that business that has been causing issues with parking, traffic, everything like that, so we're just trying to keep that, so those TUPs get addressed properly and mitigated.
Okay, yeah, that's, that makes sense. Okay, understood, thank you.
All right, that being said, do we have, oh, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motion and seconded, please vote. And that passes.
I think it's you.
Mr. Mayor, your vote?
I voted.
Is it a aye?
Yes. Okay, that passes four zero. So, we will move on to the business section. Item number thirteen, create an ad hoc committee of the council to develop prioritization selection criteria for future traffic signal locations. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So the reason for this item coming forward was, and I'll give you a little bit of history, we have a PowerPoint that's coming up just shortly. So traffic signal prioritization, so we decided to bring this to the council due to the history of our traffic signal priorities within the city. Next slide, please. So on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Traffic Safety Commission received a presentation from staff that showed a priority list of the top signals that had been developed over probably the last twenty years at various intersections within the city. Most of these top ones went through a warrant analysis, but didn't go through any expanded selection criteria, criteria beyond that. So the locations will still need to undergo, we're going to present quite a few right now, but they're still going to have to go over warrant analysis for each of the signals. However, we are proposing that more criteria is thrown into this, and more criteria is used to kind of prioritize throughout the city where our traffic signals are going to be. Next slide, please. So the ones that were actually identified at that April twenty-fifth meeting were the following that you see on the screen. You can see Margarita and Jedidiah Smith, Rancho Vista Road at the high school, Nicholas Road at two locations, Joseph and Medusa, La Serena, also at Medusa, and then Deer Hollow at the high school. So you can see, a couple of these, we're looking directly at the high school's safety, looking at making sure things are good for the students and the parents as they pick up and drop off. Next slide, please. Potential future ones are on Red Hawk Parkway, Vale Ranch Parkway, Butterfield Stage Road, actually three of them there, and Vale and Red Hawk. So you can see, these are some of our more well-traveled roads, so volumes are taken into account, not only just vehicle volume, but pedestrian volume as well. And next slide. So this is continued on from, you can see Butterfield has another one there, Rainbow Canyon Road at Bay Hill, you know how busy that gets with commuter traffic, Rancho Cal at the mall, Meadows Parkway at Royal Oaks, and then we have Pujoal in Maine, Diaz and La Serena as well. So you can kind of see, kind of, we're taking these, you can see that they're prioritized by our high volumes of traffic throughout the city, moving people from north to south, east to west, that's how it was kind of developed. Next slide. Now, there are going to be signals that are going to be associated with development, so Overland Bridge Project, there'll be one put there, Diaz at Overland, Alvenita Alvarado, Overland at Commerce Center, so these are one, these are CIP projects, so is French Valley Interchange Phase Three, and then you can see the Cherry Streets that we're looking at, that's the major connector into the city of Marietta, and then we have Alter, that's been conditioned to do two signals, Western Bypass at front and First in Pujoal. So those signals will change the entrance and kind of look of Old Town as well, once Alter builds those. Next slide. So because of the fact that these were all just based on a very quick snapshot in time warrant analysis, and it's been so many years, at the request of Councilman Calphus, we were looking at, can there be more criteria associated with how we prioritize our signals in the city? Our city's changed a lot, there's, we could do more besides the warrant analysis, so we're asking that the City Council approve a recommendation for the creation of an ad hoc committee to develop prioritization selection criteria for future traffic signal locations. That'll conclude my report.
All right, any questions? Well, I'm going to suggest Calphus and Schwank be the Subcommittee. I, I think we should do it and have that deeper dive by the council into the signal.
Sure.
I'll second that.
I'm a traffic signal wonk.
Wonk?
Let's do it. I'll second that motion.
All right, so everybody, oh, yeah, so it's, it's, please vote. All right, so that passes four zero. So now we're off to items for future agendas. Do we have any? Nope, none being said. City Manager report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just one item I wanted to mention, I know he's not here tonight, but he might be tuning in, but Michael Hustlin, as you know, heads up our Information Technology Department, and it was brought to my attention that for the seventh time, our IT department is being honored with the MESAC Award for Excellence in Information Technology. So, yeah, we can, we can clap for, for their efforts there. This is a prestigious award, and, and basically the efforts that go into our support services, into our IT platform, you just got a little piece of it tonight in the presentation and the work behind the scenes on the website, but we know they do so much more, and so I'm glad they're, they're being recognized by their peers at MESAC, and they're in possession of the award, and we might actually have them come and present that in front of the City Council at a later date. So I wanted to give a shout out to Michael and DP, your entire team, and everyone that's working back in the back room. Thank you for all that you do, appreciate you.
All right, City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had a close session tonight, but there are no reportable actions under the Brown Act.
All right, with that being said, we are adjourned.